What's the change?
All right, we're on.
Page two, Katie.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting of the Board of Selectment for March 27, 2014. Call to order. First item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from March 11 and March 18, 2014.
I will move approval of the Tuesday, March 11, 2014 minutes.
Second.
A motion made in second, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. March 18.
I'll move approval of the March 18, 2014 minutes.
Motion was made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. The future meeting dates, so we're going to meet on April 1 and April 22. Tom, you can't meet on the 15th.
15th, no.
We understand it's tax deadline day.
You would want to see.
Did we want to put one more in there in between?
Well, our response on the 40B comment letter for the Henrys property is do what you have to do.
Yes.
So we probably should try and get one between the 22nd and the 30th.
And the 30th.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the 29th.
The 29th is the day of the town election, so we probably wouldn't want to have the meeting that night.
I know you can't do the 15, Tom. You want to do right after the 15 or right before it?
I, right after would be better. So if you wanted to do the 17th or 18th, I could probably, what's, no, I'm going to run. So, yeah, the 16th, 17th would be fine.
Yeah, the question, I think, is the letter.
It will be ready by then.
The letter. Probably too early.
Or do you want us to talk about it on the 22nd and come back on the 25th or the 26th, something like that?
The department heads, the deadline for department heads to submit their comments and concerns regarding the Henrys 40B project is April 4. So we won't even have all the information to the Town Council.
Right.
So you could do maybe the 22nd and then Thursday, the 24th, two in one week.
Well, unless you want to move the 22nd back to the 18th or something like that, and then do the 24th as well.
That's fine with me.
That's fine with me, the 28th I can't make.
Okay.
Would that be better?
That's fine with me.
So we can meet on the 24th or the 18th?
24th and then the 17th or something like that, yeah.
What day is that holiday, you know? Sorry to push you on the spot.
No, it's okay. Well, first.
15th is what day?
The 15th is a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
The 17th will be a Thursday.
Thursday.
So Thursday, 17th and Thursday, the 24th?
That's fine with me.
Does that work? Yeah. Katie, are you okay with the 17th and the 24th?
Yes.
Okay. That'd be better, right? We can talk about the letter on the 17th and approve it on the 24th.
That's, so when it's ready by then, yes.
Works for me.
That's fine.
So it's April 1, 17th, and 24th.
April 1, 17th, and 24th.
Yay.
All right. Okay, number four on the agenda is the approval of the payroll vendor warrants.
Okay, move approval of the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion was made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number five, citizen speak. Anyone here for citizen speak? Not tonight. So we'll move on to number six, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, 2015 recommendations. And are we bringing Amy up for this?
Yes.
Yes, come on up, Amy. Amy Dexter is our town accountant.
And Mr. Chairman, it looks to me as though all the items on this are to be bonded. None of them are non-bonded, capital bonds, am I correct?
On these, none of them are non-bonded.
Okay, so in that case, I'm going to be recused on this agenda item.
Hello, Amy.
Hello.
Do you want to go through the list?
Sure, do you want me to read everything off or just give you a quick summary?
Unless, Tom, I mean, you're on the Capitol Committee with Amy. Is there anything you want to bring up?
No, just very quickly to explain what the Capitol Committee, you know, was formed by town meeting as a committee to review and recommend to the Board of Selectment and to the Warrant Committee various capital expenditures, you know, be they through bonding or otherwise. And we have a review process and basically come up with recommendations.
And does every member of the Capitol Committee come up with their own recommendations? And whichever one matches is what you go with?
No, it's just a committee process, so it's.
More of a dialogue. We invite the department heads in to discuss their needs, why they need things, what their top priorities within the different fiscal years. They give us a five-year plan, and within each year, they'll try to prioritize what they're asking for. And then the committee, just through discussion, decides mainly based on the department heads, what they're saying is really the priority, who's going to make our recommendations.
Spending almost $2 million, and it's, $2 million is being spent on basically three departments, DPW, police, and schools.
Yes.
Well, that's, the general fund is only 500. We're recommending total capital projects of $585,049 that would be out of the general fund.
Yep.
Then we have $714,000 out of the water enterprise and $693,000 out of the sewer enterprise fund. So that's, that would be self-supporting debt, meaning that the debt service on the water and sewer debt would come out of the user, the rate revenue, as opposed to the general fund is out of the tax levy.
And I noticed meter replacements for sewer and for the water.
Mm-hmm.
Is that replacing all the meters in town?
He has a, was it about a five-year plan to replace all of the meters in town, about a million, 1.2 million a year over the next five years, and it's shared equally between water and sewer.
I guess the meters have a relatively short-term life.
I think he said 15 years, and they're all getting pretty close to, if the meters aren't running right, you're going to have a problem with your revenue. So it's important, this is a really high priority item, to start replacing the meters. And obviously, you only can do so many at a time, so.
To get accurate readings.
Right, right.
Yeah.
The only other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, you're looking at $1.9 million worth of recommended capital projects. There's probably about $75 or $80 million worth of capital projects requests to come in.
Right. I do have a little summary of that, of over the net, we asked for a five-year forecast over the next five years. There's a total in the general fund, I'm sorry, total in the general fund, $42,341. Water fund, $6.5 million, and the sewer fund, $2.6 million, for a total of almost $51.4 million over the next five years.
In requests?
In requests.
Obviously, we can't fund those.
In requests. We know in that amount, there's some very large items, such as replacing the DPW facility, fire station, water, potential water tanks up on Blue Hills.
Can I ask, what kind of a number did you put on replacing the DPW?
20 million, I believe.
20 million?
Yeah, it's, yep, it's about 8.9 million.
Okay. So that's a big chunk of the 51 million.
So it's a lot, a lot of requests, but we just don't have the capability to really fund much of that. Of that request, a total request submitted for fiscal year 15 for the general fund only was 4.2 million, of which the committee is recommending 585,000. Very small percentage of what was requested. Do we feel we could fit into the debt service model?
Unfortunately, the, well, and I guess it's a fact of life, the school department, because of the change in the MCAS and the requirement that the MCAS be online right now, or next year, requires them to purchase computers, laptop, or smart book, Chromebook computers. So that was a rather large expenditure, which we didn't have much choice.
$110,000, yeah.
Unfunded mandate. And further on that, which trying to get funded by other means, is a whole upgrade of the network structure, the wireless network structure, to be able to support that many Chromebooks online at the same time.
Also, the Milton Foundation for Education has also very generously supported some of this effort. So they're really, it's something that they're mandated to do. I believe the new testing is going to be called PARC. I'm not sure what that acronym stands for, but it is switching from MCAS to PARC. And in order to do it, all the students need to have wireless capability and have Chromebooks in order to take the tests.
That's amazing.
So it's, so that was a very high priority. They need to do it. So we felt that that was extremely important.
So this, just again, from my own knowledge, this $2 million that's been spent, none of it is being bonded?
It's.
Or is it all being bonded?
All being bonded.
It's all being bonded?
Yes. Yeah, and two-thirds of it, obviously, more than two-thirds of it will be bonded at water, sewer, or paid by, by water and sewer.
Paid by water and sewer.
And the way we have scheduled out, our planned for bonding would be to bond in August of 2016. So the first bond principal payment would not be due until fiscal 18, at which time there's a large debt service payment that's fully paid off. So we're trying to plan it so that the debt service payments will kick in when other ones roll off, so that there won't be a huge impact.
I get that. Can you repeat some of that again? So you borrow it in '16?
You can short-term borrow for up to two years.
Yeah.
And when you short-term borrow it, you only pay interest only. So if we plan the purchases and the short-term borrowing properly, we can bond in August of 2016, which means the first payment due is interest only, which would be due in February. And then the next payment is interest plus principal, which is where it really increases. And that would be due until August of '17, which is fiscal '18. So the timing of it is critical. Ordinarily, historically, the town is bonded in February, which would make the first large debt payment due the next fiscal year.
I see.
So we're trying to plan it to push that principal payment off until fiscal '18, when there's other debt issues that are being fully paid off in '17, so that there's room in the debt model for that to come on.
Good. Well, there's plenty of accountants on the Capitol Committee. We're trusting you with this one. We do have a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee for FY '15 departmental capital needs as presented in the memo from the Capitol Committee dated March 18, 2014.
I'll second the motion. Any further comment? Good job. Well done. It's a lot of work. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Next up, number seven on the agenda is the Mass Housing Finance Agency Comment Letter for HNW Apartments on Randolph Ave. This time, I'd like to bring up John Flynn, who's a town accountant, town accountant or town council.
Do the temporary sign. Temporary signs? Do you have temporary signs?
Temporary sign approval?
Oh, the Wildcat? Yeah, sure.
Do that first and just get it on the line.
Sure, yeah. You can stay where you are, John. We'll be right back to you. Just going to move on to number eight, the temporary signage approval. Milton Junior Wildcats.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a request from Milton Junior Wildcats football cheerleading teams to display temporary signage on the following locations, Blue Parkway, Canton Ave, March 15 through April 30, Adams and Brook Road, March 15 through April 30, and Milton Public Library, March 15 through April 20.
Second.
Motion made in second, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Go back to.
Item seven.
Item seven, Mass Housing. Welcome, John.
Good evening.
So our deadline to send in a letter to Mass Housing is on Monday.
Monday, the 31st, yes.
And you, along with our attorney on the board, Katie Conlon, and we've taken, put a letter together, and we're here to discuss this letter tonight. We'd like to also welcome our planning director, Bill Clark.
Bill actually did most of the initial work on this, right?
I wasn't giving him the credit because he wasn't here, but now he is here. We give you credit.
Thanks.
Bill, do you want to take this away? Or you came up with some of these points and why we should approve them?
Sure. I coordinated the different senior department heads and the different departments in town comments. We have comments in here from the police chief, the fire chief, DPW. I did go to the building inspector. I know there's comments in here dealing with public safety, traffic, site conditions, the environmental issues. Environmental issues were some from me, some from Mr. Lynch, the DPW director. And there's a lot of legal stuff in here from Mr. Flynn. We went through this initially, following the, following the requirements that had given us by the state, which is CMR 5604. We went through and we went line by line what the items would be. Starting here with the public safety issues, we talked about the emergency access. Right now, as proposed, there's one road in, and we actually feel that somewhere in the process, there needs to be an emergency access point. Traffic, traffic is a huge issue on this site. We talked about it from, from the car point of view, from the people who live there taking the bus for public transportation. With the traffic, Route 28 is just a, it's a raceway at times, it's a huge commuter road, and it's the road that takes you to 93, 95, 24. It takes you back up to 139, all these different state roads that come off of Route 28. It's a major cut-through road from Boston into Randolph, Brockton, Avon, and people are looking to take and cut off the Braintree split. Taking and putting 72 units on, onto that road. If you're trying to come in or go out, there is no turning lane, there is no light, it's just adding X amount of more traffic. And there is no traffic study that came with the request for site plan eligibility. We're stating that something needs to be done in that area. We talked about the safety issues. The driveway, we talked about the width of the driveway, the sighting of the driveway. We talked about the grade of the driveway. We talked about the width. The width is 24 feet, there is a four-foot sidewalk. We actually require sidewalks to be 52 inches. And part of that is because that's what our sidewalk plowing equipment is, and it also allows you for room for the, for snow disposal, which, as proposed, the roadway system does not allow for storage of any snow in that particular roadway. And this roadway goes over a wetland, so there'll be a box culvert there, and there's no system showing how you're going to not put the snow into the wetland, or where you're going to store the snow. We talked about the public transit. Well, there are buses available on 28, on Randolph Ave. You could catch a bus if you walked up two blocks that will take you to Quincy to Ashmont. But the issue is if you're, if you live in this establishment, and you're going to take the bus in the morning and go into Boston, you have to cross four lanes of traffic. And it's not advisable in that spot. We've had, we've had some serious accidents out here, we've had pedestrian, pedestrians getting hit out here. It's not a conducive road to cross. There's also, they make a lot of comments about the Brockton area transit. Well, that bus doesn't stop in Milton. I believe it stops at Milton Hospital, but stopping there is a whole lot different than making all the other stops in Milton.
Isn't that just a drop-off to not to pick up?
I don't know that.
Okay.
I did put in that call at the bat to find out, but I don't know if they pick up at The environmental, the Conservation Commission has taken a look at the site. There is a superseding order that depicts where the wetland line is. A superseding order is one that was chosen by DEP, which is Mass DEP. The application as submitted doesn't talk anything about saving the existing trees. It doesn't talk about habitat preservation, doesn't talk about biological diversity. It really just talks about replicating an area. Doesn't really depict where that area is, but it states it's going to replicate an area. If you dig down a little bit further and you look at where they're going to replicate and what they did for the road, there may be a threshold that is, that you go over, which is a 5,000 square foot of wetlands that are impacted. And the way we do our math, looking at the roadway system, we've, we believe that they have triggered the 5,000 square foot.
That would be a state climate?
The topography issues, the topography issues on this site are pretty, they're tough. They're 160 feet on the, on the high side, 110 on the low side. You've got a 50-foot drop from one side of the project to the other. Their plan is to take and build their units into the hill, so that the underground parking is completely underground on one side. The first floor can actually be sunken down a little bit, too. The, the green space that they've actually offered, if you look at the plans that are out there, the green space is, it's just that, it's a green space.
Upper use.
Practicality, you know, in the wintertime, it'll be great for sledding. They're just, it's a, there's a 15-foot rise, it's the side of a hill. So the practical use in the summer is questionable. Design guidelines, we believe that the, as designed now, these are, this is multifamily housing in a predominantly single-family residence community in this area. The size of the building, the bulk of the building is not, there's nothing around it that has that bulk, that has that height. We don't have anything that has three floors in that particular area. The, most of the stuff on the east side is one-story, they're one-story ranch houses, and they've taken and put in three-story buildings over a garage. Water system, presently, the system shows them bringing in a 1/8-inch line and then putting two hydrants in. That's all well and good, but right now, we have a water hammer situation in, in that particular area. To take and bring in another line is just going to exacerbate that, that same situation.
Water hammer?
At the end of the line, there'll be air in the line, and therefore, when we turn the water on, it just, it bangs. So what we would be requesting, or asking for, is that they loop into an existing line. The, it will increase the water quality, it'll increase the water flow, there won't be a potential lag at the end of that pipe. To take and connect it in, the closest additional town line is over in the DPW yard, there's a six-inch line that has a fire hydrant on it, so we can make them loop in, grab to that fire hydrant. Now, they're increasing their fire, their, their water capacity and the water quality, so they'll get an increase in it.
It won't be a dead-end line.
Yeah, it won't be a dead-end line. Less work for us, too, on flushing lines.
Bill, will it be two lines coming in, two water lines, one for fire and one for domestic?
I don't know that that's.
Or would, would one line feed both?
I believe one line's going to feed both, but they're, I know that we talked to the, to the engineer and about moving one of those hydrants. We, as, I did with Chief Grant, we didn't like where one of those hydrants was located and had them move it, and they were, fine, they'll move the line. And it was an extra, extra fire hydrant in there, too. And the issue becomes one of, if he has to take and bring those lines over into the DPW yard, he's going to wind up cutting up an area of their, their land going into our land. We have the potential to take and put in that public safety gate over on top of the water line. It is not a road for the tenants, it's not a road for residents of the town, it is strictly a public safety access point. If something were to happen on their road going in, the police, the fire, and ambulance can get into that site still, because they would come through the back gate. This is coming into the DPW yard, which is already locked on both sides. This would be putting in a gate that only our public safety vehicles have access to. Sewer system, the existing sewer would be tied in 600 feet downstream from the present gravity interface. They will have to put in a new, new manhole. Their proposal was to, for us to raise one of, they would raise one of our manholes. That's not going to happen. They'll put in a whole new separate manhole that will go back and feed into our system. We did make a comment that there is a risk that the capacity of the existing sewer may not be able to accept the peak flows, therefore, the development's going to have to do a study to figure out, can it? We talked about the state development principle, smart growth development principles, and how this project does not meet all of those, they get pretty, pretty low scores for smart The project does not contribute to the revitalization of a town center. It's not walkable, it's, it's walkable to transit if you call the buses transit, but then you have to find a way to cross the street. It's not walkable to a downtown or village center, it's not walkable to a retail center. I mean, one of the things they checked off, that there is shopping in a town center nearby. Well, if shopping at Tedeschi's is, is shopping, okay, but I don't really call less than 1,000 square foot store a shopping center. There, they say that they have a letter for support from the chief elected officials. That one's, they checked that box if you don't have one. We didn't, we didn't write one, and you didn't sign it.
They said that? Okay.
The project doesn't concentrate their development. It doesn't preserve undeveloped land. I mean, they're taking green space and making it in. This isn't a redevelopment project. Is it fair? They, are they improving a neighborhood? Or are they, I don't believe they're improving the neighborhood. I think they're taking the people in the front and putting very large buildings behind them. They've taken and built it into the hill, therefore, you've got the people in the back who thought they had more, more space, and they've actually pushed the buildings into the back, trying to take advantage of the slope of the hill. Does it conserve resources? Well, they've, they have to cross the wetland, they'll be impacting the wetland, they'll be restore, they'll be replicating a piece of wetland that they have impacted, and they haven't done anything that is going to improve the natural resource in that particular area. There's also that the habitat part would go with that, and right now, the area is, it's loaded with turkeys. There's a lot of deer in there. The deer will move, the turkeys bear, they're there for the, for the long run, but they'll be, be pushed out into 28. Right now, you get about a deer a week out on 28 that gets hit. Provide transportation choice, the area isn't completely walkable. You're not going to be able to walk to a playground, you're not going to walk to a school, you're not walking to a supermarket. So it's not, you know, it's, it's within half a mile of the hospital, but it's a little more than you may want to do for a walk if you were living here. The project does not increase job opportunities, and it doesn't foster sustainable businesses. In summary, the project is exceptionally large for Milton, exceptionally large in this area. It dwarfs the homes around it. Adding potentially more than 160 new residents will have many negative consequences. As proposed, the project is predominantly three bedrooms. We've made that known to them several times that, you know, the three-bedroom units just don't, you know, they don't work for the town. They do have severe impacts to our town services.
Which would mean 160 would be the minimum new residents.
Yep.
Is the number three bedrooms worked into the final draft?
Thirty-six.
It's mentioned on page one.
It wasn't really mentioned as a negative, though, was it?
No.
In terms of impact, and I know that's not necessarily their concern when they look at the design.
Their design is, the more conversations I have with them, they're, I keep stating that they have to do something about the 36 three bedrooms, and they're saying, well, we'll turn the 36 three bedrooms into two bedrooms and a den. Well, that's all well and good, but that didn't happen.
Still three bedroom.
There's still three bedrooms at this point.
But I think we probably should have something in the letter with respect to the impact of three bedrooms on a school system that's already somewhat pulging.
You said, Tom, is that really a criteria?
It's not really a criteria, but, you know, it just, that's my understanding, is that, you know, one...
It's the economic fact for the town.
Yeah.
I think the big thing here is the access onto Randolph Ave. Public safety, the fact that you have one road that goes in and the same road comes out. I don't think we should be offering or even talking about access through the DPW yard. That's not our problem, that's their problem. We shouldn't be offering them anything. If they don't have a second means of egress out of the site, well, that's their problem, you know? We can be using the DPW yard for something different in the years to come, so...
It potentially would impact that.
Right. But the fact that, and you mentioned, Bill, the road is too narrow, and I believe the same thing, the access road, you can't put the snow anywhere. In the event of an emergency, how do you get into it? There should be some sort of an access that they put in on their land. You know, it doesn't necessarily, should go through our land, you know, the DPW. But that's, to me, that's a huge problem. How do you access the site in the event of an emergency if that road gets blocked off?
And if you put another access on there without going through DPW, we crossing the wetland again?
No, I think what you would have to do is, the area that is the paper street now, between 693 and 711, would have to be wider. Instead of 24 feet of pavement, it would be, there's supposed to be a, if this was a subdivision, there's supposed to be a 50-foot feet. Feet being the layout of that road. Without the plan in front of me, I can't tell you what that feet is, but it would impact more wetland. Impacting more wetland absolutely will, absolutely will take and trigger that 5,000 square foot number, which...
I guess what I'm saying, too, is if you had a second, an emergency access egress that didn't go through DPW, would that also have to cross the wetland?
I'm saying that I don't know where you're going to put it without making the road wider.
Okay.
Making it wider, regardless of what happens, I'm still going to get by.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, okay.
Because it's surrounded by houses, and there's really nowhere else to put a road. Is that what you're saying?
I know that there's a 50-foot feet in there. They're constructing it to be a much smaller footprint. You have the opportunity to take and keep the smaller footprint, or for the sake of the emergency access, you could blow it out to a full-blown road.
Full road.
Put in the full-blown road, and now you can fit the accident plus the public safety vehicle by.
Okay.
But you will take and impact that wetland because you have to do a stream crossing. You'll go over the 5,000 square foot number, which will mean that they have to now go to Army Court and the state, so you're tripping, too.
Bill, have you checked the building dimensions on the plan versus on the application? Are they the same?
No, I didn't check them that closely.
I'm told that there's a discrepancy between what's actually on the plan and what's in the application, so we might want to check that. But other than that, Katie, you had one omission or something you wanted?
Oh, we probably should talk about the, Katie, I think you had to talk about that item, it was Katie, the first item we have.
I didn't discuss the deed.
Yes, and I think Katie doesn't change it in any ways or...
Well, I think the change was just, so page two, 1, 2, 3, 4, paragraph four, so that the last two lines would read, the last clause would say, "It does not permit a quote commercial structure or a quote parking structure which will serve any commercial structure" unquote to be built." So we're just taking out a few words in there that, we're just quoting from the deed restriction.
Right. That deed restriction's on a significant chunk of, about an acre of the site?
It is. For the developers, they could take and pull it out of there, but at that point, it would be in the, in the area where the parking lot is now. The buildings wouldn't be, the buildings would be a little bit higher, they wouldn't be built into the hill, therefore, it would seem more in your face, particularly to the houses that are on Randolph Ave. It would bring it closer to that wetland line, and those people will absolutely see buildings.
Right.
The only other thing I saw with the letter, I, I don't have any problem leaving it in, it was in the brush-up road one, but I believe it's a non-issue, is item B on the second page, which is the limited distribution organization, that I do hundreds of these. There's hundreds and hundreds of far profits.
Which one am I looking at?
Item B.
Page two.
Page two.
There's, it's not uncommon to have a far profit because the state will force you to enter into a regulatory agreement, which will mandate that you be limited distribution. So it's, it is kind of a non-issue, but...
You're right. It's a limited liability corporation.
Right, and limited liability isn't limited distribution, but the state will force you, your funding source will force you into a, into being a limited distribution. John, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to mention that the reason that's in there is the regs require that.
Yeah.
It doesn't, what they've submitted so far doesn't show that, so we should at least point that out.
Yeah, I was saying, I don't have a problem with it being there.
You notice that the focus here is what is required by the application requirements and the state regulations and what they haven't met in those regulations. That's what we tried to do with this, and that's one of them.
I just had two minor little things. On page six, where we talk about the design guidelines, the last paragraph there, we talk about the building being out of character with the neighborhood. And we mentioned that it's proposed to be three stories, which is not found elsewhere in this part of town. The last sentence there says, "Mansard roofs are not found anywhere near this development site." I know the reference to the mansard roofs is in here because when we were on the site walk, the state did talk about the addition of the mansard roof.
As a feature, yeah.
Yeah, trying to blend it in with the neighborhood, but I didn't know whether we wanted to either keep that sentence and add another one or just change it to convey to them that just by adding mansard roofs to large rectangular buildings doesn't make the, doesn't make the buildings consistent with the type of housing found in the neighborhood, it doesn't make it consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Rather than just saying that they're not found anywhere, should we instead be pointing out that just by adding that to a large building doesn't make it consistent with the neighborhood? I don't know if it's that important. The sentence just struck me as a little bit...
I think the typology is important, and I think you're right.
I think if you just take, took it out, Katie, and finished it at the last sentence before that, that would suffice.
I would have taken added the more to what you've just said because it does go to the point that, you're right, it was mass housing that brought up the point that, well, they, they're putting the mansard on there so that it blends in with the rest of the area. Well, it doesn't. Nobody else out there has something that big that has that. This is in a greenfield, this isn't in, this isn't in a developed area like 36 Central, which has a mansard roof, but it also has buildings around it that are that high. This is in a greenfield, and there, there's nothing like that down there.
Because I think the point would be, even if there were a house there that had a mansard roof, we might still want to argue that just putting a mansard roof on a large rectangular box building doesn't blend it into the neighborhood just because it has a different style of roof than what the application a couple of years ago had, which I think at that time, I didn't see it, but that was large boxes.
Take a write-in on Quarry Street and look at the, look at the mansard roofs on those condos on Quarry Street right behind Common Market there.
And then the other one is on page seven, section L, this is about the Sustainable Development Principles. I think we just want to point out, because John pointed out the other day that on a call that the only reason, it's almost as though the developer's blending this topic in because smart growth is different than 40B, so the only reason we're addressing this on page seven and page eight is because the developer has put this into their own application. So I thought we could start it off by saying, the applicant holds the project out as one that complies with the Commonwealth's Sustainable Development Principles, and then add to the contrary, and then keep our sentence, "It does not comply," and then we list all the reasons it doesn't.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Just so we clarify, that the onus is...
It's not worth throwing in there that, oh, yeah, by the way, the sustainable developments aren't being met. Okay.
Well, we'd just be clarifying that we're bringing this up because they brought it up initially, and they're claiming it meets all of these guidelines. So we're just mentioning that they've said it complies, here's the reasons it doesn't comply.
Overall, I think it's a good letter. A lot of work went into this, and we appreciate it, Bill, and John, and Katie.
And I think it covered most of the points.
Mostly Bill and John, thank you.
I think it covered most of all the points that were brought up in the, in the neighborhood meeting that we had.
So how are we going to finish this? You just make some changes, and we'll approve it tonight pending those changes?
Yes, I think that's probably the way to do it, yeah.
Can we just authorize the chair to sign the letter? I think that's what we did with Muse, I think Dennis, you signed it and on behalf of the board.
Okay.
And then we go farther from there?
Yes.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So we have a, we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the letter for the Randolph Ave 40B letter, subject to the changes that were discussed tonight, and further authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
Motion was made in second, any further comment? Yes, John?
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask if you refer to as the draft comment letter to mass housing?
Okay, accept that. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Jen. Gentlemen?
Thanks, John. All your work on this. Yes.
Down we go. We'll move on to item number nine on the agenda, which is the annual special town meeting warrants and index, and this is basically to see if we all agree on the order in which they're presented to town meeting. I'm quite content the way that...
I looked through, I have no problem with it.
Forty items that will be presented to town meeting, Ann Marie?
Yes.
Yeah, and this is, this is the historic order that they're, they tend to be in for the past few years anyways, with the zoning ones.
We have some zoning in there as well, and...
I think it makes sense to include, for instance, the marijuana zoning articles right after the Board of Health appropriation, just because hopefully we get through them all in one night, and whoever's representing the Board of Health or the Health Department that night will only have to come to that one night's meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We should probably normally point, or point out that normally the warrant committee chairman comes in and presents the warrant, but we're under such a tight deadline this year, we have a special town meeting with two articles that I know Ted Hayes gave up a vacation with his family this week to be here and work on the warrant, so he deserves a lot of thanks for all of his hard work, and he's not here tonight because he's still working on comments and the report and so many...
We've both been there, we know what it takes.
Yeah. It's a lot of work on behalf of that whole committee, especially a lot that falls on the chair, the last week or two, getting everything to...
It literally is a, it literally is a full-time, absolute full-time.
And they met again last night to finish up some of the voting on the articles.
We were actually there last night, and one question Ted had was, when are we actually going to do the special town meeting within the annual?
Usually it's, is the first thing you do. Doesn't have to be, but usually it is.
One time I remember before, the moderator opened the annual town meeting, did one of the two articles, and then recessed and convened the special town meeting, but I think that's something we could talk with the moderator about in preparation for town meeting, mother self for now.
Right. Mr. Chairman, before we talk about the town administrator, we just, we lost two firefighters in the town, city of Boston. You know, just how, you know, how brave those guys were and just how, you know, what a tough job being a firefighter is, and this kind of makes you realize what it is, so I don't know, do you want to offer a moment of silence for them or not, but they certainly deserve it.
And there was actually something really touching on television tonight. I'm not sure if you saw it, but the, what was the name of the firefighter from Hyde Park? Kennedy, was it?
Yeah.
He was actually a big brother to a boy in Milton.
Really?
Yes. And they were interviewed and very upset over the whole situation, so it was really touching.
Yeah, yeah.
He'd been a big brother for many years to this one kid that goes to our school system. So, yeah, we will, we will offer a moment of silence for the Boston firefighters. Okay, thank you for that, Tom, for reminding us. We do have the motion for the, for number nine for the annual town meeting.
Okay, I'll move to approve and sign the May 5, 2014 special town meeting warrant and approve the order of the warrant articles.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
And we also need to approve, so I'll move that we approve and sign the May 5, 2014 annual town meeting warrant and approve the order of the warrant articles.
Second. Motion made in second, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
So can we expect to get from the warrant committee tomorrow? Because tomorrow is the printer deadline, we'll get a copy of the warrant tomorrow.
Yes, yes, I'll send it out to each one of you.
Number 10 is the town administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have to report is that there will be another neighborhood meeting at Curry College on Wednesday, April 2, at 7:00 PM at the Alumni House regarding their new residence hall, and it will talk about the landscape plans, the residence hall, and the construction schedule. So again, it's Wednesday, April 2, at 7:00 PM at the Alumni.
Okay, thanks for that reminder. I will, I'll be there, I'm not sure if you'll be there. Construction has started up there. They've put in the, well, they're putting in the foundation. I see it every morning when I drive out of my, come out of my house.
It's pretty much across me a driveway, isn't it?
Right across the road, yeah. And I just want, you know, some of the neighbors are upset over trees missing, but that's normal in construction. You remove trees and then you put in your foundation, put up your building, and then the trees go back. They plant new ones, so just have a little patience, and it'll be all over in about six or eight months.
I do think that the landscaping design that Curry has presented at some of these meetings has been good. They've been detailed, they've been comprehensive, they've had a lot of drawings, and they did explain that most of the landscaping would be done after the construction, so...
Not necessarily, so... Not necessarily, so, yeah.
And they're trying to keep as much as they can of the existing shrubbery and trees, but some of it will be replaced, so...
And they've been very accommodating, Curry, you know, most of the construction vehicles will come in off of Blue Hill Avenue through the main entrance, right down through the school, so nothing will go on Brushell Road, you know, interfering with normal traffic from neighbors, and again, they've been very accommodating, I can say, you know, so, all right, thanks, anything else, Anne Marie?
That's it.
Just one thing to say about the chairman's report, a couple of years ago, when I ran for this board, one of the main complaints I used to receive was from the building department, and I guess it was because I'm in the business, and I got to say, I got a great phone call the other day from a developer in town who said that we've gone from being a department where people were nervous about going into, to a very welcoming department today. And so I thought that was a good news story to tell the public, that you can come in and get your permits to do your decks, and to do your porches and stuff, it is a welcoming department again.
And we certainly make great strides to try and streamline it as much as possible, and over the next year or so, I think that streamlining will start to show benefits.
That's right, yeah, you can actually apply for permits now online, I believe. Right, can you do it from home? Yeah. Okay, and that's the end of my report, so I'll, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you, good night.